Good evening. My name is Nicole Platt. I'm a member of the Lawrence League of Women Voters and tonight's moderator for this Milltown public access televised forum. The League of Women Voters of New Jersey is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. We welcome women and men as members. Tonight's audience questions and the candidates' remarks must follow League of Women Voters' policy of being concerned with issues and not personalities. The moderator, which is me, will not allow any abusive, personalized, or irrelevant questions or remarks. In the interest of time, I think Russ has already asked you to hold your applause till the end of the forum, and please turn off your phones and electronic devices. Thank you. We are going to begin this evening with an introduction and a three-minute statement by each of the four candidates who you see here. You can see their signs. We have Margaret O'Donnell and Phil Zambrana, who are both Democratic Party candidates, and on my left, your right, we have Dorianne Kerber, an incumbent councilperson, and Richard Ravelinski. And we decided to go from your left to your right with our opening statements. So I shall begin by introducing Margaret O'Donnell, and then she will give her three-minute statement. I didn't introduce our timekeeper, Russ, in the dark t-shirt. He will be timing the candidates on their three-minute openings, their three-minute closing, and their one-minute answers. And we're very fortunate to have two members of the press here tonight, Susan Lawyer and Rob Rakoski. And they, after the whole opening thing, they will be asking the first questions of all four candidates. Okay, so we will start now with Margaret O'Donnell. She is a 16-year resident of Milltown, where she considers her neighbors like extended family. She has served as the sixth district committee woman since 2013. She has been involved with Milltown recreation programs for more than 10 years, currently serving as a volunteer coordinator for two adult volleyball leagues. Margaret is an executive education program manager at Rutgers Business School, a position she has held since 2012. She has worked at Rutgers in progressively responsible roles since 1998. She is a Rutgers alum and has served her alumni association as awards committee chair, events committee chair, first vice president, and president. In 2009, her work at Rutgers, her volunteer work at Rutgers Garden, was recognized with the DOC Award for outstanding dedication and commitment. And in 2014, she was named a loyal daughter of Rutgers. She also serves on the Board of Directors of the Mid-Jersey Chapter of the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation since 1999. And Margaret was born in the Bronx, New York. She grew up in northern New Jersey, in a northern New Jersey suburb much like Milltown. She's the fourth of six children raised in a civically active family. In her spare time, she is a sports enthusiast, watching football and playing volleyball, and she likes to bake Irish soda bread, which is reminiscent of her family history. And here's Margaret.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, everyone. I'm extremely proud to be a candidate for Milltown Borough Council alongside my running mate, Phil Zambrana. As mentioned, I grew up in a small, tight-knit community very much like Milltown. My parents and five siblings were civic-oriented and involved in school, church, and borough activities, and we all still are. I love that neighbors in a small town are like extended family and look out for one another. That nostalgic feeling brought me to reside in Milltown 17 years ago and was probably the factor that weighed most heavily on my decision to run for Borough Council this year. I feel a sense of obligation to look out for the best interests of my fellow residents. I've become concerned about the future of our bucolic little borough. Milltown matters to me. In my role as a committee woman for the past three years, I've learned that Milltown matters to you too. So, to the South Main Street resident who told me the recycling pickup was taking place so early it was waking his young children, and to the Washington Avenue homeowner who shared that while walking her dog, she fell over sidewalks raised by roots of borough trees, and to the Ford Avenue resident who just wants to know what the heck is going on over there, I'm in this for you. I'm prepared to do what it takes to keep the great things about Milltown great, and what's not so great, I'd like to address as expeditiously as possible. I'll employ my formal education, work experience, acquired skills, and innate talents to be the best possible candidate you could ask for. In other words, I'll give it everything I've got. Thank you for taking the time to learn more about this year's candidates through this forum so that you can make an informed decision when you come out to vote on November 8th. Every vote counts, your vote counts, and Milltown matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Phil Zambrana. Felipe Phil Zambrana Jr. is a Democratic candidate. He has lived in Milltown for 11 years with his wife and two daughters, now age 19 and 15. Phil first became involved in the community as a weekend recreation coordinator for soccer and basketball. This role led him to attend school board meetings and ultimately to seek a position on the school board. For the past five years, Phil has been a member of the Milltown Board of Education and most recently chair of the board's Finance and Facility Committees for the three consecutive years. Having earned a degree in finance from Baruch College, Phil is a research contract grant specialist within the Office of Research and Sponsor Programs at Rutgers University. His clients include various departments within the Rutgers Biological Health Sciences Group as well as the Center for Alcohol Studies. From 2012 to 2015, Phil was the Assistant Business Manager for Rutgers School of Social Work. Prior to joining Rutgers, Phil spent 10 years working at several startup companies in the media, college sports, and Sirius Radio, where he served as a financial steward for these operations. Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name's Phil Zambrana, and I'm running for Borough Council for two main reasons: for my family and to bring my financial expertise to the borough. Regarding my family, my wife and I, Andrea, moved here approximately 11 and 1/2, 12 years ago from New York to raise our two daughters so that they could be closer to their only living grandparent. And because of that, we fell in love with the values that we saw in Milltown. Values like being involved in their school, being involved in their house of worship, and also to help folks wherever they could. Regarding my financial background, I've worked in the private sector for over 10 years in various startup entrepreneurial businesses. In these types of businesses, the norm was actually to do more with less. And because of that, you were able to dig in and get your hands dirty, roll your sleeves up, and I always had to figure out how to think out of the box, be creative, to make things, get things done, and to get things accomplished. In my responsibilities at Rutgers University over the last six and 1/2 years, first at the School of Social Work as an Assistant Business Manager, and now at the Research and Sponsor Programs Department, I've overseen budgets in excess of $20 million. Currently, Milltown doesn't have a long-term or a short-term plan or vision. I believe with my background and my experience in finance, I can craft a plan that can stabilize taxes and prioritize the important items facing the town. The current financial committee continues to make large purchases but doesn't budget for them. I view the residents of Milltown as my Board of Directors, and they should deserve to see how their tax dollars are spent. That's what's called transparency. When the residents of Milltown, what they have today is one meeting a month, which is a break from the past, which is when they always had two meetings a month. Oftentimes, a one meeting a month can run late, and oftentimes, a lot of the agenda items are not addressed regularly or properly, which then means that meetings are rescheduled at not the most opportune times and on short notice. Keeping the public informed by having more than one meeting a month, that's what's called communication. So if my running mate, Margaret O'Donnell, and I are fortunate enough to be elected to the council on November 8th, we pledge to return transparency and communication back to Milltown because Milltown matters to both of us, as we know it does to you too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate here is Dorianne Kerber, the Republican incumbent for Borough Council. Oh, yes, and I'm going to read you her bio. "Dorianne Kerber is 52 years old and has lived in Milltown for 13 and 1/2 years. Dorianne is a self-employed businesswoman. She is married and has two dogs. Dorianne has a bachelor's degree from Kane University and an associate from Union County College in Business and Computer Science. Dorianne has always been involved with her community and has actively worked with various organizations. Wanting to further serve her community, she ran and was elected to council in November 2013 and took office in January 2014. She is currently the only woman serving on the Borough Council. In 2014, Dorianne chaired the Parks and Recreation Committee. In 2015, she chaired the Environmental Health and Social Services Committee. And in 2016, she was appointed chairperson to the Utilities Committee. In addition, Dorianne is currently the council representative liaison to the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Education, and the Municipal Alliance. In the past, while on council, Dorianne worked on the Public Safety Committee and Public Works Committee. In addition, she has served on the Environmental Commission, the Shade Tree Commission, and the Electric Advisory Committee. In the past two and 1/2 years, Dorianne has worked diligently to apply for and obtain grants for the borough. She continues to support the various organizations in town by attending their fundraisers and ceremonies. One of the most touching ceremonies that she attends annually is the 9/11 memorial service at the American Legion, where the members of the Legion, the Ladies Auxiliary, the Recreation Department, the Borough Police, Fire and Rescue, and the Boy Scouts do an outstanding job of reminding the residents and honoring the memories that gave their lives that day. Dorianne has enjoyed working on the various committees over the past few years, but what she has enjoyed most is talking to and listening to residents. They continue to inspire her, and they are the reason why she has decided to seek a second term on council. Dorianne."
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Nicole, and everyone here present, attending the candidate forum. You heard the moderator read a brief bio on my background, and I don't want to repeat what she has already spoken about. Instead, I'd rather tell you a little bit more about me. Back in 2013, I was approached to run for council. My first thoughts were, I'm not a political person, and what could I possibly do on council without a degree in political science? I told the people who asked me to run that I would think about it and get back to them. Then a short while later, the Odd Fellows, another organization I support and volunteer my time with, decided to do a walk and run in multiple scoliosis in North Brunswick. I was attending the event, and unfortunately, as things sometimes happen at events, an issue arose. I was just a participant, but immediately, I stepped in, didn't hesitate, and gave support and didn't give it a second thought. I then was able to gather some of the additional volunteers to help resolve the issue. Later that day, I met a Franklin Councilman who was at the event, and I asked him, after chattering a while. I was impressed how I jumped in to help at the event. I just told him it had to be done. I mentioned to him, and I was considering to running for council, and what he told me was, just go for it. I told the party that I had decided to run for the council, was immediately upfront and told them that I am not a political person, and that I'm very direct, and I do not play games. I was delighted to hear that I was what they were looking for in a candidate. I was told they wanted someone who can think for themselves and would always put the residents first, and that there was one rule. That one rule is I would never be told how to vote or what to say at a council meeting, but I would always be expected to be able to explain why I did or not do something. I am proud to say that three years that I have lived by that rule, and I'm honored that I'm asked to be run for reelection again. My first year on council was an eye-opening. My running mate took office in January 2014, and we were in the minority. I thought, once elected to office, that everyone would put aside their party ideology and work together. I was surprised that first year. The other council people would not even talk to anybody or myself, and they would just not even say hello sometimes during the council meetings. I didn't let it bother me. I persevered and continued to work on my committee assignments and ensured I communicated with my activities to the other members of council as well as the residents in my council reports. I was never afraid to ask any questions or bring up any kind of concerns. Looking back at the first year, I think how much more I could have done for the borough if people could have just worked together and put aside the party politics. I am proud to say that last year, when my party took control of the council, myself along with the rest of council, I've made every effort to work with all the council people. My job is to serve the residents, and I do just that. I enjoy working to help residents. I like talking to the residents and hearing what they have to say. I found...
I think that's time.
Sorry. Thank you.
You finished your sentence?
That's okay. No, I didn't. I just look forward for you to choosing the right candidates on November 8th when you do vote.
Okay. And sitting on your far right there is Richard Ravelinski, also a Republican candidate for Borough Council. Richard Ravelinski is 35 years old, the youngest of our candidates tonight. He is a municipal utility and construction professional and a lifelong Milltown resident. Richard attended Parkview School and Joyce Kilmer School before matriculating to Spotswood High School in 1996, where he excelled in academics and sport. Upon graduating from Spotswood in 2000, Richard attended Rutgers University, where he took up coursework in engineering prior to earning his Bachelor of Science degree in environmental policy in 2005. After graduation, Richard worked at an engineering firm where he assisted in the development of capital improvement plans, performed feasibility assessments, oversaw utility construction projects, and other miscellaneous duties. While in the position, Richard worked on the first phase of water main cleaning and lining project along Main Street in Milltown. Richard also began working toward his master's in construction management at this time. Richard left CME Associates in 2010, just prior to marrying his wife Jennifer, where he began his career in construction management. In Brooklyn, New York, Richard and his team worked with state and local agencies, labor unions, and material vendors to construct a $100 million stormwater and sewage pumping station. Richard continued pursuit of his higher education and earned his Master's Degree of Science from Stevens Institute of Technology in Construction Management. Richard and his wife Jennifer bought their home in Milltown on Elmwood Drive in July 2012. They still reside there, and their children, a son Everett, was born in 2012, and their daughter Adeline was born in 2014. Richard is heavily involved in his community. He joined the Milltown Fourth of July Committee, where he serves since 2012, and he continues to serve on the Milltown Zoning Board of Adjustment, Milltown Revitalization Committee, Milltown Office of Emergency Management, and the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency. Richard also serves as a committee member of the New Jersey Chapter of Water for People, where his volunteer efforts support fundraising activities to provide clean drinking water for people around the world. Richard.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole, and to the other candidates up here, as well as to everyone viewing at home, and to those who helped put this event together tonight. My name is Richard Ravelinski, and I am your 2016 Borough Council candidate. While my bio is a list of my accomplishments and gives you a synopsis of who I am, I'd like to take the time now to tell you what I am. I am a man who does not give up lightly, a man with strong convictions, who believes that the skills I have honed in my professional and personal life will be an invaluable resource to you, the residents of Milltown, as your councilman. I am a man of integrity, who will not sacrifice what is right simply to avoid a disagreement. I'm a man of reason, who is not afraid to admit when he is wrong or to listen to the opinions of others and revise my own opinions. Last year, I sat here and asked you, the residents of Milltown, for your support as a council candidate. And while I was unsuccessful last year, I did not give up. In fact, instead of turning my back, I stepped up and decided not only to continue with my previous obligations and commitments to the borough, but to take on new roles and help improve the quality of life for this town. As a member of the Office of Emergency Management, I have witnessed firsthand the dedication of our police department, fire department, and rescue squad, and have become more familiar with the challenges they face to keep us safe every day. As a member of the zoning board, I have listened to both residents opposing and in favor of variances and variance requests, and demonstrated my ability to empathize with both sides, to weigh the pros and cons of each and make decisions for the betterment of the borough. On the lighter side of my duties, I remain an active member of the Milltown Fourth of July Committee, and I've also joined the Milltown Revitalization Committee. Both of those committees, as you may know, have quite fun events, and it's not the fun that drew me, but rather the value of community that those events represent for the borough. I've become a constant face and voice of reason at our Borough Council meetings, voicing my concerns and offering support to council on both sides of the aisle, not just at election time, but throughout the year. As a member of the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency, I've contributed by providing my expertise in construction management, expressed my concerns over future plans, and worked with Mayor Stever, our engineer, and our attorney to make sure we keep moving forward in the best interest of the borough. Needless to say, I am intimately familiar with Milltown. And lastly, as your council candidate tonight, I've taken time to meet with hundreds of residents throughout the borough, going house to house and door to door, and not caring about political alliances. I've asked you, the people of Milltown, what your concerns were, and I've listened. I've taken time away from my family to ensure that my family and yours both enjoy the better quality of life in Milltown. While I don't do this for fame, and certainly not for fortune, I only hope that these efforts do not go unnoticed when you make your selection and decide who will be your reelected and newly-elected Milltown Borough Council members. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're now going to proceed to our questions from the press, and I would just ask the candidates to keep an eye on Russ with his clock, because with our 60-second answers, when you see him put up the 10 more seconds sign, please realize that you need to finish your sentence. If it's a slightly long sentence, that's okay, but do not start another sentence. And we'll now take our first question from the press, which will be from Susan Lawyer of the Home News Tribune, and I'm going to ask her to, we're going to ask the candidates in reverse order, your first question, please.
Okay. Basically, if elected, what's your plan for keeping the municipal tax rate stable?
Did everyone hear that? Yes.
I'm sorry.
Keeping the municipal tax rate stable is not an easy task by any means. We have aging infrastructure. We have issues that need to be addressed. And I agree 100% with Felipe regarding our need to develop a long-term plan. But I think that plan extends far beyond simply acquiring equipment. We need to look at our infrastructure and determine what needs to be addressed and develop a plan that encompasses everything, from our trees, our sidewalks, our roadways, our sewer system, our storm sewers, and our water system, so that when we go in and do a project, it's done right the first time, and we don't waste money by going back a few years later. And we also need to be prepared for the unknowns that are out there. Developing a plan at this time that encompasses those aspects is not going to reduce taxes, but it will certainly be done to stretch the dollars to their maximum benefit.
Thank you. The same question now to Dorianne Kerber about keeping municipal tax rate stable.
In order to keep our tax rate stable, we need to do an assessment with each department and what needs to be addressed in each of those departments, so that we can evaluate and create a plan, definitely. In many of the classes and sessions and workshops I've attended, it's important not just to have a capital plan, but have a working plan. Do a five, 10, or 15-year plan, and we need to focus on all aspects of all departments, be it from computers to the water infrastructure, to any electrical services that we have in town. Many of the departments are working with accomplishing those repairs in as much a timely manner as possible, but we need to assess that much more in order to go forth and either get some grants, also plan accordingly, and work into a real plan to accomplish keeping these more stable, and also probably doing inter-local agreements with some of the neighboring towns and viewing what they can do to keep their taxes low.
Thank you. The same question now to Phil Zambrana.
Thank you. As I said in my opening statement, Milltown doesn't have, it doesn't seem to have, any kind of long-term or short-term plan or vision. If elected to the council, I would literally go through every single department to look for any inefficiencies or to see where money isn't spent wisely. My biggest issue is that if, and I understand and I agree with Mr. Ravelinski about infrastructure and projects, usually when you plan for these things, you budget for them. You don't buy big-ticket items and then find a way to fund them. My understanding was a few years ago that the Democratic Council, when it was in charge, had a five-year plan that was forwarded. I don't believe that that plan was actually followed up after the Democrats lost control of the council. So I would, again, look for any inefficiencies, and I think if you look and you plan accordingly, you can stabilize taxes easily. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the same question to Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you. In a plan to keep our municipal tax rate stable, we need to gain control of our spending. Just a reminder to everyone that bonding is borrowing, and we're continually bonding to purchase some of the equipment and infrastructure improvements, and we really need to have a plan to make those payments when they come due.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Rob Rakoshey, also a member of the press. This question will go first to Dorianne Kerber, and then we'll go that way and that way.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all. I want to continue the discussion about infrastructure. It was mentioned already that infrastructure has a lot of hard decisions in it and a lot of evaluation. But with any smaller town and with any older town, there's a lot of upkeep and there's a lot of development work that needs to be done. What's your vision for being able to maintain or develop new infrastructure, be it roads or sewers or anything of those natures, while at the same time reassuring the taxpayers that they're going to be able to survive this without seeing an enormous tax increase? Because that's always their concern.
Okay, and that's for you, Ms. Kerber.
Okay. We definitely have to look at costs. We have to be going out for more competitive pricing so that we're looking at contractors or suppliers in a better way. In terms of planning, that's the biggest thing. I don't think we've ever had a big plan. I have never seen a plan of action to... You need to really plan. In order to plan, you need to budget as well, and you keep within those. We are bonding for things that we need, the infrastructure, everything is antiquated. We need to move forward and build a plan and do it in increments. Try to find grants, try to find assistance. Try to find grants, try to find assistance, try to educate our current staff, so that some of this can be done in-house, as opposed to always outsourcing with lots of contractors. If we do this and also educate our people, we can save in that manner.
Thank you. The same question now goes to Phil Zambrana.
Thank you, Nicole. Our infrastructure is old, and it's very simple. When you should bond is for things that are, things obviously that you can't afford. But if you have a plan in place, you should be able to take care of these things a little bit at a time. As I said earlier, Democratic Council a few years ago put in a capital improvement plan, and that wasn't followed up by the Republican Council. It's as easy as taking and sticking to the plan that 10% of your water lining projects are taken care of on an annual basis. So, you know, every 10 years or when you get to the end of 10 years, you will have followed and taken care of all of these projects in town. It's very simple, and it's easy to do without actually bonding for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The same question now to Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you. Our infrastructure is as historic as our lovely little town is, and we do need to make some difficult decisions. For those of you who are fellow homeowners, you understand this as well. You need to make tough decisions about what you can afford to do and when, and when you need to make big purchases and big investments, you plan for them, and I think that's really key. One thing about getting grants is that we found a really creative way to have some in-kind matching, and we need to look at those kind of things to be creatively approaching our financing of these projects.
Thank you. And now the same question to Richard Ravalinski.
Well, this question seems to have actually a couple of different facets, one being financial and the other being experience with the utilities and our infrastructure. I have my master's in construction management, and I've worked in the construction industry for about 10 years now. So I'm well aware of the pitfalls that can occur with sloppy contracts, as well as not incorporating all the aspects you want to cover. I'm also well aware of those costs. And it's true that we may not have the money in the budget now, but we need to consider that out of your taxes on an average $163,000 home, the average home is about 21% to the town to cover all of your municipal services. It's about $1,700 a year. Our schools, however, are 63% of your taxes. And in the past two years, we've seen an increase in the school board budget by $1.471 million. That's a lot of money that could do a lot of good. We need to work together with the school board to see how they can better improve their efficiencies and help distribute that tax dollars evenly, so we can improve the other aspects for all residents.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go back to Susan Lawyer with the Home News Tribune with another question, and this question will go first to Phil Zambrana.
What's your vision for the Ford Avenue site?
That's a very good question. There's a lot of things, from a development side at the Ford Avenue Development, there isn't a lot, we don't have a lot of control. This is in the court's hands at this point. The number of units that will ultimately, or maybe ultimately, develop there will be decided by the courts. That's still up in the air as to how many units are going to be. The one thing that we do control, though, is oversight of that site. And if we, if Margaret and I were elected to the council, we'd make sure that oversight was there, so that things that, like what happened two weeks ago, where there were hundreds of gallons of PCB oil that spilled into Mill Pond, don't actually happen. We have some control over that, and that's my vision. I would do whatever I would, could actually, to minimize the number of units there, because that will impact the town in a big way, the school and the surrounding infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Margaret O'Donnell.
So in terms of a vision for the Ford Avenue site, as Phil mentioned, much of the decision is in the court's hands right now. Our goal would be to minimize any negative impact to the borough, and that might mean number of units, but certainly for the moment, it means safety for our residents, our schoolchildren, and that would be our first priority, to keep that site safe.
Thank you. And now we go to Richard Ravalinski with your vision for the Ford Avenue site.
What I'd like to see with Ford Avenue is commercial. We need ratables in this town to fix our infrastructure, to keep taxes low. And as the only member up here tonight of the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency, I'd like to set a few of the records straight. Number one, there has been no talk whatsoever about your kids going to New Brunswick High School, should houses be put on Ford Avenue. So I hope everyone's hearing that, because going door to door, I've heard nothing but fear from residents about that. Secondly, what I'd like to point out is that currently, there is a court decision that'll be held in November regarding the number of units that the state will require us to put on there for the affordable housing obligations. But that's not the end of it. Once the property is sold to the developer, the developer has the opportunity to come back to the borough and propose an alternate development plan, including commercial and residential. So all is not lost, and stay tuned for more updates and get involved.
Thank you. Dorian Kerber, your vision for the Ford Avenue site?
Well, again, this is a private owner. It's been in litigation for such a long time. I would love to see some commercial, as well as some senior housing. We also historically have never fulfilled our co-obligation of moderate or low-income housing, and it's in the hands of the judge at this present time. And in terms of anything happening over there, our staff is there. Our authorities do come and check out anything that's been going on, and everyone has been very good in addressing the issues over there that have happened, and they're continually observing and watching what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our next question from the press comes from Rob, and Margaret O'Donnell will be answering it first.
I'm struck by the vision and the discussions around what to do with Ford Avenue. How do we maintain an infrastructure development in an aging town? What I'm interested in is your vision or views or thoughts related to the concept of shared services, and whether or not you'd be comfortable with many services being shared amongst the smaller municipalities around, be it North Brunswick or East Brunswick or Spotswood or anything like that. Margaret?
Okay. Margaret?
Shared services are definitely something that we should consider and look into. Whenever we're looking at financial savings, we should consider all of the possibilities. In a traditional brainstorming way, nothing is off the table until it's determined to not be the right thing for us to do. But look at each thing very carefully, and shared services would definitely be among the things to strongly consider.
Okay. We now go to Richard Ravalinski with your view of shared services.
When it comes to shared services, there's pros and cons to everything. I, for one, would not like to turn over our police department, or fire department, or Office of Emergency Management requirements, because that's information that is really specific to Milltown, and we know how to handle that best in-town. With every shared services opportunity that does arise, there is the potential for cost savings, but we always need to evaluate our exposure to risk and what we're going to owe for that. While it may be an upfront cost that's less, down the road, it may be more. So in some circumstances, they are good. For example, if South Brunswick does its own paving for roadways for a mill and overlay, and our utilities are good, it might be beneficial to ask to, you know, borrow their equipment or go into a contract with them, or for the procurement of police radios, or many things. But they need to be evaluated on an individual basis.
Thank you. Dorian Kerber?
I agree with you. Emergency services, rescue, fire, and police, of course, we benefit greatly for their services. I would not see about sharing services in that area. The water infrastructure, yes. And electrical and roadway paving, absolutely. I definitely would consider even tree line clearance and removal. There are other towns neighboring to us that provide that specific service only, but we'd have to sit down as council members, as well as the other towns, to discuss those further. And definitely, it would be more of a cost savings and a beneficial, keep our taxes lower. In terms of doing special emergency services, don't forget, other towns have those services, and they pay a fee for it. And I think for other things in town, other than emergency services, certainly, that's a consideration to cut our costs.
Thank you. And Phil Zambrana on shared services.
Thank you. I agree with Margaret. When you're looking for cost savings, when you're looking in every corner of your financial statement to see how you may save money, you need to keep your options open. Is the Office of Emergency Management something that you would look into? Perhaps. The police and the fire department? Probably not. As a school board member and the head of the Finance Committee, we've actually done some shared services with Spotswood, our high school, to sort of contain costs, and even if it's only for a year, it's something that we were able to accomplish and make work. There should be no reason why we couldn't reach out to the towns closest to us, East Brunswick, North Brunswick, New Brunswick, to kind of foster a better relationship to see how we can help them and how they can help us. It just means more communication, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, members of the press. We have an awful lot of very important questions from you, the audience, here, and I'm going to try and combine some of them, even though each of you candidates has just 60 seconds to answer. These questions are very important, and I would ask you to please direct your attention to them. And I'm going to re-figure my sequence, and this, Margaret O'Donnell will speak first. I have a variety of questions on, well, I'll try to put it this way. We have, here's one question. Were Milltown residents adequately informed in a timely manner about the oil spill in the Mill Pond? And Milltown residents like their Mill Pond? And when will it be cleaned up? And what will you do to promote the cleanup if elected? So the question of notification and cleanup, beginning with you.
They can't do that. I didn't see that sheet. They can't all answer, I understand what you're saying, but they can all answer that question.
Oh, the cleanup, they-
They're going to make a decision. They're going to lie up here, so.
Okay. Well, then I'll combine the notification with the transparency questions that I'm getting, which have to do with whether one council meeting a month is adequate, and whether the notification of the spill that was posted on the police department website, that was how residents were notified, this question says. So notification and the transparency and the adequacy of one council meeting a month.
Comment on whether you think it's being done right or wrong, how they're going to do it, but you're not positioned to do anything, you're not on the council, that's my point.
Are you satisfied with one meet-
At the whole point of everybody talking about what the council would be.
Okay. What's your policy on notifying of a toxic spill? And how often do you think the council should meet?
Okay. All right. I think I know what I'm answering. I would have much preferred to have received a NICSIL emergency notification. I think a toxic spill is an emergency. And because I promote communication, would have had a public forum, public meeting to discuss that further with the residents as well. In terms of our meeting schedule now, it may be inadequate. Almost every month, there's an emergency or special meeting held as a follow-up to the monthly meeting. So I think we can look at the meeting schedule and possibly increase to have better communication, accountability, and transparency with our residents.
Thank you. And now to Phil Zambrana.
I also agree that there wasn't adequate communication sent out to the residents at large of Milltown. It's very easy to send a NICSIL alert out. That's probably the quickest and fastest way that you can make residents aware of what has happened, so that you don't start rumor mongering, and you don't get the residents up in arms as to, you know, what's going on? How's this going to affect my household? How's this going to affect my kids? I still don't know why there hasn't been a meeting that's been called, a special meeting of any kind, as of today, to like, address this issue. And concerning the one meeting a month, and then the special meetings that are then called, just today, there's an item that was posted to the website of Milltown, that there will be a special meeting on the 24th at 6:00 PM. These are the kinds of things that, you know, if you had two meetings a month, you wouldn't have to do this over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorian Kerber?
Again, Ford Avenue is a private owner, and we did everything we could in our town with Office of Emergency Management, our zoning officer, and the DEP came in right away. We also had Millses County Hazmat. We were notified of what occurred, and there was a recommendation made, but it's not always up to us to go forth and provide that information. It's always based on the DEP and what they recommended. Again, this is private property. And in terms of one meeting a month, on occasion, we do have a special meeting. Sometimes the paperwork takes a little longer to get through, and it's only a small decision, it's not a full meeting, and we're required to do a special meeting. That hasn't always happened over the last three years, and especially the last two years. So, you know, special meeting has to be required, has to be required, to move forward with some, certain projects. But sometimes, everything can't be done.
Thank you. Richard Ravalinski?
It seems like both of these issues are really combined to a communication and transparency issue all in one. We do need to do a better job at the borough level, at the municipal level, to improve communication with residents, engaging them and keeping them informed. To not necessarily delve into all the details of Ford Avenue, other than that, I know emergency personnel were contacted, EPA, New Brunswick Water Department, there was no immediate danger to residents, and we have to evaluate issues before we start releasing information and creating mass hysteria. So when it comes to an issue, I would first validate the issue and make sure it's true. Notify other council members to get input from them and their respective departments on how we should address it. Find out what action is required by law, what we can actually do by law without just running our mouths. Notify the public if a special notice is required, as well as disseminate information truthfully to avoid rumors. Follow up, and finally, talk to the residents and make sure they're involved and kept informed.
Thank you very much. The next question may not be familiar to all the candidates, but several people in the audience are concerned about this issue, which, if I can summarize one of these questions, it says, "Representatives of the library board, the school board, have been attending planning and board council meetings for well over a year to discuss their concerns about contractor on main, allowing their trucks to drive into the municipal parking lot, past the library and Joyce Kilmer School." Is everyone familiar with that controversy?
Yes.
So the question is, so this is about potentially permitting business work vans and trucks to utilize the library driveway. So the question is, if elected, what is your position on this issue? And this question, we begin with Mr. Zambrana.
It's a good question. I'm a school board member, and I'm also on the planning board, and because I was a school board member and on the planning board, I was recused by both lawyers. So I actually wasn't involved, wasn't invited to the meetings, wasn't allowed to stay. When we got into the nitty-gritty of the details, from my understanding, it now lies with the current council. And this has been kicking around now for three, four, five meetings now, and there's no actual decision yet. I don't know if that has anything to do with Election Day being around the corner, but my primary concern is the safety of all pedestrians. But my primary concern is the safety of all pedestrians, including the children. So if it turns out that the plan that I actually get to look at, if I have to vote on this in January, because there's no decision made, if it's in the best interest of all pedestrians, including children, then I would vote yes for it, and if it doesn't, I'll vote no.
Thank you. Now the same question for Dorian Kerber.
Yes. When it was first approached about this, I was definitely adamant about it. Safety for all residents, safety for the children, seniors, and whoever uses the library, and also across the street with the school. It is very important to keep our children, our seniors and adults, safe in that area. It requires keeping them more controlled than where they enter in that area. And currently, Main Street seems to be fine for them to travel in and out and to utilize church and go to in front of the library. I think it's not a wise idea, even though we appreciate the work that was done in bringing back the building. It's more of a concern to be safe, and we need to keep everyone safe. It's a safety concern.
Thank you. Mr. Ravelinski?
I'm not afraid to weigh in on this. I would vote no. And the reason why is because, at the several council meetings, I've heard both sides. We have a dichotomy of interests here. On the one hand, we want to encourage business in town, and on the other hand, we want to keep everyone safe. Now, safety, of course, takes priority, but I don't think that the access that's being requested by the applicant is a necessity to make his business thrive. There are other options available. And as I stood up here at the council meeting, I had said, "How about working out a deal just like the previous owner of that facility did with the church across the street? Some shared services. One hand washes the other. What's good for one can be good for the other. We need to keep our kids safe, first of all. We need to evaluate whether or not we can handle that traffic and what the best approach is." And the reason there's been no action on this issue is because after the last council meeting that the applicant attended, he hasn't resubmitted a request. So there's no reason to vote on it because he hasn't followed through with it.
Thank you. And Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you. I consider the fact that when an easement is granted, it's granted to all the future owners of that property. So you're making a long-term decision. And I did ask some of the board and council members if they would have considered trying it, you know, doing it on a trial basis, a 60 and 90 day, a six month. And it has to come from the board to the council in that way for that to be considered. But those are the types of things that I would like to see considered. Try it out, see how it works, and change it back if it's not working.
Thank you. Our next question is one of several on water quality. And I'm going to try and summarize it by saying, Milltown has, Milltown's infrastructure is old, our water mains are old. The prior administration funded water main relining for problem areas. However, that program was not funded in 2015 or 2016. How would you address this water quality slash quality of life issue? And I'm sorry, Ms. Kerber, I didn't warn you that you would be the first one to talk about water quality.
Yes. In terms of the water flushing and relining project, we did quite a bit. We accomplished quite a bit, and I've heard good things about JFK and the other areas in town that we have done. That's, of course, just a part of it. We need to continue that program going forward. Not all the funding was used, but at this point, we're not able to move it to another area at this time, until we discuss it further. And in terms of the water quality, we are in touch with New Brunswick Water on a regular basis. We held a meeting, we're going to have another one come up. We are always discussing what they're doing, and I'm happy to say, the RFP proposal is due out this week, if it hasn't been done last week, to do more improvements. They have a plan for 2017 to 2018. And that's why I like facilitating and meeting with people to get their knowledge and what they're doing to improve our services.
Thank you. And now the same question for Mr. Ravelinski.
Regarding water quality and the improvements that have been made, once you make a decision and you start moving forward with it, it's not always in your best interest to just run wild with it. There's other opportunities out there. Some mains are not meant to be relined. The wall thickness of the existing pipe is too thin. We've had many breaks, many little replacements over the years. So we need to evaluate other opportunities before just going forward and wasting money. Secondly, water main cleaning and lining, while it's advantageous in some areas, cost-wise, it's not in others. You can replace mains with other items like American Water Works approved polyethylene pipe, which is a cheaper product, much longer life expectancy, and has flexibility where it gets stronger in cold weathers, and you're not going to have breaks. So I think we need to consider that. Other regards to water quality, we need to look at other sources, other sources of water. It's known that New Brunswick hasn't done a great job over the years, and we keep fighting with them for improvement, whether it be turbidity at their treatment plant. So we need to evaluate other sources of our water and make sure residents actually keep us informed.
Thank you. The same question now for Margaret O'Donnell.
Until this summer, my primary concern about our water was that I occasionally had rusty, dirty water come out of my pipes. Not all the time, but enough to be bothersome. But since June of this year, when elevated lead and copper levels were identified in water samples, and our recent PCB contamination of the mill pond, which is a secondary water source for our drinking water, I have different concerns about our water. It's something we need to look at very, very seriously and make a top priority of our next administration.
Thank you. And Mr. Zambrana?
Again, I understand by listening to Councilman Kerber's comments about that not all of the money was spent from the most recent water lining project. Does that mean that that money that wasn't spent is going to go back or transferred to another fund? Or wouldn't that money that hasn't been spent be taken and moved to other places in town where it really could have, you know, some impact? My house actually doesn't have these issues. I filter everything anyway in the house just to make sure my wife wouldn't have it any other way. But, again, it's an old town. It's great to say you're going to replace a water main with, you know, polyethylene, you know, plastic. It may be a cheaper product, but it costs a lot more money to actually put in the ground. Water lining may not be the longer-term fix, but you'll get 15 years out of it, which will buy you time to do the rest of the project around time.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask Russ if we have time for one more question. Okay. We have some questions about trees, demolition, which I'm not unfortunately going to be able to get to. But for our last question, we have a question here about energy use and water efficiency in Milltown. And we'll be starting, oh, crikey, with Mr. Ravelinski on this one. "In 2008, the Environmental Commission, with the borough, studied water use and energy use, and we have made some progress in addressing these issues in the eight years since. What would you do to improve energy and water, if elected, what would you do to improve energy and water efficiency in Milltown Borough?"
First, I'd like to make a correction. I just want to let everyone know that New Brunswick Water was here when those transformers came down and the PCB oils went into the mill pond, and they said that we were not at risk and that they were not drawing water from Mill Pond. So I don't want anyone at home to be thinking that we're serving them PCB or contaminated water because of the events that occurred on Ford Avenue. And now to the question regarding energy efficiency and the cost of water. Water loss in America is at a staggering rate. This is in part to products such as ductile iron pipe or PVC pipe, which has joints. The joints deflect, they leak over time, and that's money just gone. There are other products, like I mentioned, polyethylene pipe, which is a leak-free system, and actually, studies have been proven that it's cheaper to replace a water main with polyethylene than it is to actually clean and line. So these are options. I'd also like to mention that as far as energy, I think we need to really focus on our solar initiative and straighten out that ordinance. We need to make sure that we're doing everything we can in our facilities to make sure that we are encouraging green energy and efficiency.
Thank you. Margaret O'Donnell, energy and water efficiency.
And, you know, unfortunately, I haven't been briefed on the 2008 report that you're referencing on water and energy efficiency. But I can say that savings of all kinds, costs, spending, water and energy are extremely important. We pay for all of these things, so saving on them is extremely important. And I'd love to see the 2008 report that you're referencing, so that whoever brought the question, I can talk to you about it on an individual basis then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zambrana?
When it, just to point back to Mr. Ravelinski's comment about New Brunswick Water and the Environmental Protection Department, I understand that DEP's in and New Brunswick's in and everybody's saying everything's okay, but it still is the duty of the council to send out some sort of anything, any sort of informative communication to the town that basically says, "This is what happened, this is what we're doing, and as we get further information, we will send you an update, whether it's an update on the website, whether it's an update by NICSIL." We don't have to wait for anybody else to do that, we could take care of that here. In terms of energy efficiency, I've already spoken about, you know, the water lining. Energy efficiency, I think what the question Mr. Ravelinski was referring to was, there are solar owners in town, and there is a difference of, the town pays them back at a wholesale rate as opposed to a retail rate. What they're looking to do is be reimbursed at a retail rate. If that happens, that's a loss of revenue. I don't think that the rest of the town should subsidize those 12 solar owners because they got a bad deal from their solar company. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Kerber?
I just have a correction on the relining project. We found 1,250 feet of relining done back in the 1960s. So relining does last more than 10, 15 years. It was great to find that out when we discovered it. In terms of energy use, definitely, solar has been purchased by some residents. We will have a future meeting soon to provide information on the ordinance and updating that in addition. In terms of savings, we have an LED program that started, and we're going to progress on that, so to give more illumination in town, and that will help, you know, offset the expense of the incandescent lights that are currently used. I'd like to see that report, too, from 2008, to get a better understanding, so I can give you a more educated answer.
Thank you very much. Now I'm going to ask Russ if he wants to take his five-minute break, or, yes, we are now going to take a five-minute break. The candidates are not going to mingle, they're going to prepare their three-minute closing statements. Everybody, we're now going to have our closing statements from each candidate, and this time we'll begin on your right with Richard Ravelinski.
Thank you. You know, I'm glad that we were able to bring some literature with us tonight to make sure we had our facts straight. And I've been staring at this all night, which is a birthday card from my son. And if you can't read it, it says, "For heroes like you, with great power comes great responsibility." And while there's a little joke on the inside, it's an inspiration to me, and it keeps me grounded as to why we're all here. At times, politics can get a bit crazy. When we're passionate about something, tempers can flare, frustrations take hold, and anger rears its head. I'm passionate about Milltown. Having grown up here and now raising my family here, making sure this town provides its best it can is something I'm very passionate about. As you've seen tonight, there is seldom a topic that does not elicit differing opinions. But we must remember that fighting is not the answer. We don't need to fight for Milltown. What we need is cooperation, communication, to take a breath and open our minds and open our ears and listen. A few years ago, before I got married, my wife and I took a retreat to strengthen our relationship. During a group discussion with other couples, a man stood up and said, "My wife takes every opportunity to remind me that God gave me two ears and one mouth, and I should use them proportionately." I chuckled a bit, but I took that sentiment to heart. We need to improve communication with the residents of the borough on a regular basis through our website, through newsletters, through group discussions, and signs. We need to encourage interaction between organizations, committees, and, yes, political parties, so that Milltown receives the best we have to offer. The time is now, and Milltown is at a crossroads. Our infrastructure's aging, the cost of maintaining it is going up. We've seen a steady increase in school board taxes, our biggest tax dollar recipient, and we have still yet to provide our families with full-day kindergarten, and our teachers remain some of the lowest paid in the district. The fact is that the cost of doing business is going up all around, and we cannot afford to continually pass the buck or rely on quick fixes. We need to find creative solutions to bring revenue through encouraging businesses to thrive in Milltown. We need to make sure our tax dollars go further by having proper planning before we take action. We need to improve efficiency and maintain operations within their budgets. We need to develop long-term planning. We need to make sure we have the money before we get started. We need to address all the aspects of the borough, no matter how small, so that the quality of life is improved all around. On November 8th, when you go to vote, think before you press that button. Think who will do what is right for you and for Milltown, and you'll find your finger slowly moving to the left to cast your vote to re-elect Dorian Kerber and myself, Richard Ravelinski, for Borough Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Dorian Kerber.
Thank you. I would like to thank Russ Einbeiner and his committee for putting this forum together, also Nicole, the moderator, and the members of the press and the audience, home and present. You've heard a lot of information tonight. Things are getting done in town, and there's still more to do to continue moving Milltown forward. I've been driving the issue of bringing our borough up to 2016 technology standards. We need to upgrade some computers, our phones, databases, and communications. Our website needs to be updated so that we can be more useful, user-friendly, and easy to navigate to our residents. We need the departments to be able to have their own pages and provide the ability to update and retrieve data for requests and concerns throughout the borough. Computers and software need upgrading department management so it's easier and more reliable. We need to find better ways of communicating with the residents. NICSIL is one tool, but many residents do not use it, or they're not comfortable with this technology. There's other social media options we could use, and we need to continue communicating with others and to include all residents. As I've said before, I believe all members of council need to work together for the betterment of the borough. I support diversity of ideas, and I pledge to continue to work with everyone on council. I feel the time has come to collaborate and seek cooperation amongst the various committees, commissions, departments, the community, and most importantly, the governing body. Working together, we can achieve so much more in Milltown. I have long been a supporter of applying for grants to help offset the rising costs of programs and to lessen the burden of the residents. I personally spent countless hours researching and applying for grants and discussing things with current departments and addressing the aging infrastructure, as well as assessing the need for the future. Financial plans are being worked on to ensure money is put aside for projects and repairs. I believe that working together with the department heads and volunteers have come forward to ask to assist me on grant research as well as writing grants. In addition, we've got to look at the playgrounds, the parks, all areas, the roadways. There are grants available. When I think finance, my first thought is how we can keep the costs down for the residents. How can we lessen the tax burden? I feel strongly that a tax increase should always be the last resort. While Milltown does take care of itself, I feel reaching out to others in town to see how they handle projects, I mean, I'm sorry, to other towns to see how they handle projects or what processes they use is a good way to build partnerships and look for potential shared services in some areas of our town. We need to look at more green initiatives as well, and really give solar energy a hard look for the residents. We need to continue to support our volunteers in town, and we need to look at making Milltown more business-friendly. Thank you for all listening, and good luck to all the candidates we have heard here tonight. If you're looking for commitment, cooperation- If you're looking for commitment, cooperation, communication, and dedication, then I ask that you please vote for me and my running mate, Rich Ravelinski, on November 8th.
Thank you. Mr. Zambrana?
Thank you. First of all, in closing, I'd like to thank Russ Einbinder and the Cable Television Committee for organizing and presenting this forum tonight. I'd like to take time out to thank Nicole, Susan, and Rob for taking time out of their busy schedule to be here tonight. Although this is my first time running for council, I've always tried to stay in touch with what's going around, with what's going on around town through any volunteer work, which may have come my way. I've been a girl softball coach. I've been a girl soccer coach, and I volunteered for the parking loop. Actually, you can catch me Friday. I'm actually doing that now. Those positive experiences led me to attend school board meetings so I could get more information so that I could ensure, my own for myself, that the curriculum that was being taught to my kids and to your kids was the best that money could buy. Eventually, I ran for the school board, and as luck, that year, I actually ended up up here on the days like this because six candidates decided to run that year for three spots. So, déjà vu, I'm here again doing this again. I was elected to the school board that year because I really feel, or I really feel that the residents who voted for me at that time could see that I would work hard, make sure that their children received the best education possible. I've lived here for 12 years, but I've been coming to Milton for 20 years. When my family lived in New York, we always came out here to visit grandpa. So, we saw grandpa in September on his birthday. We saw him again in Thanksgiving. We saw him again for Christmas and the New Year. And in the summer, we pretty much made it out here as many weekends as we could because grandpa also had a pool. My goal, if elected to the council, is to make sure that this town continues to thrive so that my children and your children can one day raise their families here and pass on the same small-town values that drew my wife and I to come here in the first place. On November 8th, please take the time to vote for my running mate, Margaret O'Donnell, and me, Phil Zambrana. With your help, we can restore the transparency, accountability, and communication that Milton desperately needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Margaret O'Donnell?
Thank you, Nicole. I also feel obligated to give the only thanks to our timekeeper over there. Like, everyone else was thanked by everyone else, so thank you.
Russ Tangen?
Yes. In closing, I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for engaging in tonight's spirited discussion on the issues most relevant to the future of Milton. Your concerns are our concerns: Ford Avenue, water quality, tax and utility rates, and long-range capital improvements. We understand your priorities, and we will fight for them. Decisions made by your elected officials affect home values, tax rates, and overall quality of life in Milton in both short and long term. If you value accountability, communication, and transparency, you will want the team of O'Donnell and Zambrana representing you on the Borough Council. We plan to restore your confidence in local governance by being accessible to you personally and by proactively making municipal information readily available to Miltoners. We enjoyed getting to know you, in many cases, getting to know you even better throughout the course of our campaign. We hope that the conversations don't stop here and that you'll continue to share your valuable input and opinions so, when elected, we are truly representing you. With the right council members in place, Milton can keep its great things great. After all, we are the eighth-best town for families in New Jersey. So, this Election Day, I encourage you to vote for my running mate, Phil Zambrana, and me. We're running for Borough Council because Milton matters to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we should have a round of applause. So, now, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of New Jersey, I want to commend our four candidates for being here tonight, commend two members of the press, commend Russ Tangen, thank Russ Einbinder really a lot because he put so much into this and is almost a one-man show, but not quite. And especially to thank all of you in the audience for coming out and really being part of Milton, which is fabulous. So, I know you're all going, none of you will forget to go to the polls on Tuesday, November 8th. And Russ Einbinder has assured me that this forum will be broadcast on Milton Channel 15 many times between now and November 8th. And he also plans to put it on the YouTube site just within a couple of days. So, please, tell your friends and family who weren't able to be here tonight that they can hear from all four of these worthy candidates. Thank you very much.